We're ready, we're up.
Okay.
All right, welcome, welcome to our November 4th Board Meeting, uh, Rankin County Board of Supervisors. Uh-oh.
Plans just changed. We're basically getting some stuff there.
I got it. We were trying to get in a hurry to do some stuff.
Too late. If we started on time, we could've got it through, you know?
All right, let me start over for Jay. Welcome to the November 4th, uh, Rankin County Board of Supervisors Meeting. Um, call the meeting to order, and I'll ask Craig Slay, would you say a prayer for us, Craig?
Yes, my pleasure. Let's pray. Boy, God, thank you for your goodness to us, the blessings and the mercy that you provide to us, Lord, and the grace that you give us. Father, we thank you, Son Jesus, in whose name we pray this morning. Thank you, Lord, for the sacrifice for our sinful condition. Father, thank you for making this right with you through that gift. Father, I pray that, uh, this season, and we're entering into this season of Thanksgiving, Father, we be mindful, uh, to come before you, Lord, and to say thank you for providing so abundantly for us. Father, thank you for giving these men the skills and the abilities that you give them. Pray, Father, they'll use those for your glory, and pray they'll use them, uh, with all their best efforts. Continue to honor them for the sacrifices that they and their families made. Father, for our first responders, we can't say thank you enough, Lord, for their sacrifice. I pray for their families today, Lord, that they would be blessed and in peace, bring them home safely, and pray so.
Amen.
Amen. All right, we're gonna start off with our public comments, and before we start, let's try to keep those, say, three minutes, and then if there's some rebuttal, another two minutes, and we've gotten too long to where people sit in here for three hours, who's on the back end of the agenda, and, and most of the time, once we cover a subject, we're just going back over the ground again. So, let's try to stay within that timeframe. Uh, Mr. Cobb?
You got mosquitoes or not?
No.
Thank you.
That's it.
We killed them all. I'm not gonna tell you why, I just wanted to honor our members, after we shut down for the year. A lot of customers in good mood from a skid fight, locations have taken a nose dive. We've seen a very few mosquitoes throughout the rest of November, we're still be a little bit of maintenance and checking, and kind of, there's this weather, this beautiful, wonderful cold weather that I'm loving. Traveling mosquitoes in, uh, in the hiding or killing the rest of them all. We aren't seeing many, and we're starting to slow down and end out this season. I just wanted to let y'all know where we were, and, uh, let y'all know, even though it's cold weather, if there's a problem, you still give us a call, and we're always well. So, just kind of ending up the season, want to give y'all a little update on that before we start shutting down most of the winter season. Any questions for?
I appreciate your work, Brandon, very much.
Thank you. We should be back in after the first year, see about renewal for next year. Actually, I just wanted to get a renewal back.
But dang, I wasn't prepared.
Well, a hundred percent right. Yeah, we'll be back after the first year, talk to y'all later. Y'all have had Thanksgiving, merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Brandon.
All right, next on our public comments, on the right ends, we have Michael J. Smith of, uh, 7-Eleven Falcon Way.
Good morning, Lord.
Good morning.
Um, I'm a resident out, out at Woodbridge, and I'm the past president of Woodbridge Homeowners Association, and I gave Janice a letter that we wrote to Lee Lampton about his property out of Woodbridge. Um, he's been basically using part of his yard as a storage area for commercial equipment, trailers, pallet loads of stuff. Um, this has been going on for almost a year now, and I think we brought this already to the board's attention. I want to make sure that, that as a nuisance item, that the board's pressing him to remove all this commercial equipment, trailers, and all these pallets from his property, or not from his yard, is basically what he is. He's moved some of it around, pushed some of it into the woods, but it's still not getting taken care of. So, and then, uh, the lot to the south of his house, he built a very nice house out there. Um, he cleared it about a year ago, and then the rain set in, you know how much rain we had last year? And all this summer, he's done nothing to the property. There's still stumps sticking up, piles of brush, logs laying all in the middle of it. Um, that needs to be, as soon as the weather allows him to, that needs to be finished being cleaned up, and grassy, put out, or whatever needs to be done to make it look appropriate as a, as a lot. But right now, it's just a big mess out there. So, um, I want to bring that to the attention of the board, and one last thing, I think Daniel was supposed to be getting with Michael about our gate, make sure we're finished with all the paperwork out there.
Yeah, and we're not yet, so we'll, we'll get back with you guys on that, let you know.
If there's anything you need, get ahold of John Ossley, he's the president now.
Sure.
And, um, we'll fill out whatever we need to, or do whatever we need to. And the gate is programmable, so if there needs to be some kind of restraints on how often it's open or closed or whatever, it's, you know, you can do that.
Yeah, we'll be in touch with it.
Okay. Uh, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next, Walter B. Atkinson, 1076 Woodbridge.
Yeah, he spoke the other day.
Oh, yeah, you were here the other day, weren't you, Mr.?
I sure was, and I'm sorry I'm back. I want to give each one of you something that hit the internet just a couple of hours after I was here last time, so, uh, you be aware of that.
Thank you, sir.
This is the kind of game, I'm calling up a little bit on what, uh, Mr. Smith had to say, give you some idea of the attitude of the person we're working with. Uh, he doesn't want anybody to bother him about what he does, he wants to do whatever he wants to do with his property. Frankly, I don't have any zoning laws, you do. I don't have any nuisance laws.
Do y'all have, you do have an active homeowners association?
We do.
So, and y'all, y'all are pursuing that, I expect. I mean, that's the number one ground level.
We're getting nowhere. We're getting nowhere.
Why?
Read this. He doesn't care.
No, I meant, but your homeowners association is doing what it, is trying to do what it can, right?
Well, it has in the past, I don't know what it's doing now, because it's not.
But that is the ground level, I mean, when you come to us, it, our-
We're here because it's been going on for almost a year.
Sure.
Well-
As Mr. Smith said, it's been going on for, for a year. It's been going on ten months.
Do y'all have letters that y'all have written him from the HOA that-
I'm not part of the HOA, so I can't answer.
Mr. Smith was present, right, so?
He was present at that time.
Did he address it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
He did, and?
Absolutely.
Nothing there? I, I, yeah, and I'll go ahead, I'll let you finish, and I'll say a few things, go ahead.
Okay, so, my, my point is, what we're dealing with is somebody who is very defiant. The fact that he doesn't have a piece of property to move this stuff to is irrelevant. What's relevant is he never should've moved it in there in the first place. This is a neighborhood zone residential. He knows that, and he's just defiant. And he knows it's a nuisance, and he's defiant, and he, and he says right in here, "I don't care." And one other thing that he's passed around a little bit is that, uh, he sort of doesn't worry about it because he's got somebody down here who tears up his complaints.
Really?
Yeah, he's got somebody down here, when somebody complains about him, that complaint just gets torn up.
Has he said who?
No. He's smarter than that.
Well, let, let me speak on it for just a second. I spoke to Mr. Lampton several times, spoke to him again last week on the same thing. He has a plan, he's locating property to move his stuff. The bad answer to this whole thing is, he's gonna move his stuff, and he's gonna get the property cleaned up. The sad travesty of the part is, that's y'all's neighbors, that y'all are gonna have to live with over the next, next number of years and fight and fuss about all that kind of other stuff, that's the travesty in the whole thing. He's gonna move his stuff, and he's gonna get it relocated, and he's in the process of acquiring property to move it and get it out of that location, and that's, that's happening. So, the problem, the sad part is that the bickering and fighting between you guys on the whole thing is something you gotta live with in your neighborhood, that's the bad thing, the board's not gonna be involved in that part of it. That's the sad thing, it's never gonna wait.
That's why the homeowners association is the best way.
But, now, I understand you are, and let me address what the county's gonna do. We're gonna be sure we get it moved and cleaned up and set to the residential standards and the zoning the way it's set up, and he's in the process of doing that, and we're gonna work with him, just like we work with any other person, uh, in the community as they're trying to get their stuff cleaned up to the right, uh, setup for the neighborhood, so that's gonna happen, so. But I'll let you finish, go ahead.
I certainly hope so.
It is.
Because I looked at what, uh, people were getting chewed out of, who, uh, hadn't, hadn't cut their grass, and they had a little trash around in the trailer. This is way beyond that.
Sure.
And the defiance of it is way beyond.
Well, I think he's more defiant to you than he is anyone else, so. Well, then, well, you're the one brought the paper that's bothered about it, so.
That, that hit the internet.
Okay, well, I got you, well, I mean, I can't control the internet and stuff like that, but-
Look, drinking dial and drinking, and drinking post are bad ideas, you know? But, and maybe when he, you know, maybe when you hit send-
He said if you're drinking and getting on the internet, it's a bad idea, so.
I thought you were talking about drinking soup.
Drinking post, that's a bad idea, but, and, and maybe doesn't mean this, but he's been defiant like this. This has been going on with you for six weeks, and nothing has happened.
That, that you've seen, right? Nothing, nothing, nothing that you've seen, that's right.
Our process from start to finish, many times, or a year, by the time the just, it gets to the justice court, and, and we don't go out and put things in the paper, like publicize where we're at, and that we had this discussion or that.
Or should you?
We, we're trying, you were just here a week, two weeks ago? And we've already, he's already talked to them again since then?
The first thing-
There's a plan.
The first thing I'm gonna do, for things in my areas, I'm gonna talk to the homeowners that live there, and try to get it worked out without going through any other additional steps. And if I feel like I can get it worked out, then that's the route we're gonna go through, instead of tying up our entire system on another process. If I feel like I don't have any headway, and I can't get it taken care of, then we'll go through our proper channels and routes to get it done. I felt like I got this thing moving, and I think it's gonna get cleaned up.
But one-on-one seems real nice, but behind the scenes, the attitude is pretty defiant.
I mean, I get what you're saying. Thank, thank you for, thanks for sharing your thoughts.
Yeah, the, the other thing is, it, it appears, I know this can't possibly be the case, but it appears that if you're a poor, poor person like I looked at here last Thursday, you get stomped on pretty quickly to clean up your property, but if you're a-
Sir, that's about enough of that.
Yeah.
I've been out to places, and I picked stuff up and put it in my own garbage, and put it in my truck and hauled it off because they didn't have the money, and you're gonna come in here, no, sir, you're, this is not what this is about. This is about, you're addressed right here, it's not about anything else.
No.
We take care of our poor, we take every, uh, every chance we get.
Danny's not worth sitting.
Yes, you did, yes, you did, you said we stomp on them, when they, if they come in here poor, we, I'm not gonna have it.
No.
That's enough.
Thank, thank you, thank you for your time, thank you for your time.
Appears there's a difference in the way they're handled.
Thank you for your time.
Well, all right, what you want there next?
All right, let's move on. All business?
Make a motion to approve fifteen thirty-first minutes.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Daniel seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, uh, approved.
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
Motion to approve consent agenda by Bob, second by Daniel, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, Ms. Fortenberry.
Second. Send her to one last conference.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Bob, second by Daniel, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. John Sullivan. Good morning, John.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, uh, by Bob, second by Daniel, I mean, J., any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay makes a motion, Bob seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve.
Bob makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Ms. Haron. Uh, I've got a list.
I have one item, this is for number, request approval of a copy of contract with Rico for the unit system.
Second. Second.
Jay makes a motion, Bob seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve work compass in nineteen and what the work schedule is for November.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion on the eight, Daniel seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Request approval for AT&amp;T utility permit to place a wooden pole along and across five more yards, one view road installed between South Vine Drive and South Vine, Vine Interests.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna talk more about this here shortly on the ceasefire issues and the problems we had over the weekend on that, but anything for me on permit-wise, just makes me wanna throw up, because it's the most poorly managed setup of setting up permits I've ever seen in my life. And I know AT&amp;T and CESPAR contract these out to different groups and different, uh, companies to, to lay these things. And I guess this is as bad a work as we can possibly get to hire a contractor for these things, but when CESPAR does get here, and we've asked him to come, he should be here shortly, Mr. President, I want to add them to it, just to talk to them. And I'll tell you about the debacle we went through on CESPAR over the weekend. Uh, but, so, just because it says AT&amp;T, not CESPAR right now, then, I'm not quite as, I'm nauseous, but I'm not quite as nauseous. I'll make it through the meeting, so I'll make a motion to approve that on B.
Daniel makes a motion to approve B.
Second.
Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
A request for approval of AT&amp;T utility permit to construct fiber office tables around the lane across Greenfield Circle installed between eleven forty-four and Greenfield Circle and eleven ninety-six Greenfield Circle.
So, you're good with this, Daniel?
Yeah, AT&amp;T is just as bad, but I mean, we'll just have to live with what we got, but you'll enjoy my discussion when CESPAR decides to show up.
Motion, motion to approve.
Greenfield is, uh, Bob.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve.
Greenfield Circle's Bob.
Bob made a motion to approve, we'll have a second, Jay seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Why aren't they laying fiber, and, and then they won't put holes over on Vine Drive?
District three is a better place to live than District four.
This, this area of line right there on that creek right there, uh, that they're just redoing a pump right there on, uh, Jay, and the fibers they're doing on Greenfield, I'm worried for, uh-
Well, I understand, I, I just can't understand why they-
Where we were just building houses out on Greenfield and just putting fiber, there's still fiber in the air holes, aren't there? They're just putting air holes in it.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Parker.
See, I had to call them this morning, so they'd change their plans, like I had to do all mine all weekend, they're coming here. And if someone's to hear the story of what happened in the second half of the season. They're, they're working already, it's just-
Yes, sir.
Hang on, second buster, hang on, that microphone's not working.
Hello?
Okay. Now you're good.
Now you got me, okay, I can't mumble anymore. Okay, I'm recommending approval of this memorandum of agreement with M.D. on our spillway road mill in Noble Lake project from Grand Sperry to Highway four seventy-one, and requesting authority of the president to sign this, I mean, this memorandum.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Daniel, uh, makes a motion, Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, next item I have on the agenda is our Ventnor Crossing subdivision, stage two A. I recommend approval of that final plat, and a, a letter of credit in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, but I'm making this recommendation contingent upon receiving that letter of credit, it had been put in the mail, but I haven't received it yet.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Daniel makes a motion, Bob seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with-
The contingency on us receiving-
That you will get that letter.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, all right, let's go.
Thank you, item C is our North Shore Parkway spillway road improvement project, and we recommend a, uh, pay application number four to Hempel Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents on authority to issue that check.
So moved.
Second.
Daniel makes a motion, Bob seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all in favor? Yes, 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 okay, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, item D is our Oak Grove drainage improvement project, and we recommend approval of pay application number five in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents to Hempel Construction Company and authority to issue that check.
Does this wrap up our nightmare?
Yes, sir, it's, it's-
This?
Kind of in the cleanup phase now.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve, Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
How's that, how's that looking?
I have a ribbon cutting.
Ribbon?
How does it look good?
Looks real good, actually.
All right, that's all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Craig Slay?
Yes, sir.
At least you got this Christmas better for you. Last Christmas was bad, wasn't it, this time last Christmas? Holidays come in and get stuck.
Good morning, Mr. Slay.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. President, item A is a public hearing on the vineyards at Castle Woods LLC. This is a rezoning map correction at four twenty Vine Drive, it's a District two property. We'll open that public hearing, the county is initiating this rezoning request. It's for a correction to the zoning map as it relates to the vineyards at Castle Woods LLC. This property is zoned R one B. The apartment complex that is, uh, that exists, uh, there in this zoning, uh, context was there before zoning was adopted in oh-four. And so, when zoning was adopted, all of the existing parts, uh, apartments that were already located there were to have been included in the zoning context R four. For some reason, this particular segment was left out and was zoned R one B. So, this property needs to be reclassified as R four, property was posted, uh, notice has been published, there was one call received in opposition to treating this as R four. So, that hearing is open, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the vineyards at Castle Woods LLC, the county initiated zoning re, uh, and map correction? You'll come forward, please, state your name and address for the record.
Morning.
Morning.
I don't know the procedure, so, I don't know exactly. My name is, uh, Yvonne Berry, and I live in, uh, Cowan Creek, right directly behind what is going to be rezoned. I purchased my property, uh, last January, and was under the impression that the apartment complex within where is presently ending, that's why I'm here to get a clear understanding of what's going on.
Yeah. Let me, let me kind of add a little bit for you, I'll kind of tell you about it. The reason this is coming up, apartments were built before our zoning was in place, so the area was grandfathered in. The reason we're having to come back up and clean that up, one of the apartments burned.
Yes.
Had a fire on one of the floors. So, in order for them to get their permits and all right, we're just kind of cleaning it up and be sure it's zoned properly. The area that's covered inside that property extends down to almost that creek that kind of runs back behind it.
Right.
That's all in a floodplain, so to develop that, they'd have to do a lot more work on stuff like that. We don't believe anything's coming right there that's gonna back up to your neighborhood.
Okay.
That's just all that's on the map. So, the reason all this is coming about is because for them to rebuild that one apartment that caught on fire,
Mm-hmm.
they've gotta have the zoning properly for permits and all that, so we're trying to just clean up the map on what it was. That area was originally grandfathered as that, so there's no future plans of stuff coming in right there.
Okay, that's what I'm-
Yes, ma'am, it's, it's just all cleaning up the paperwork of it.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Interrupting, is that gonna be on record saying that, uh, there's no future?
Yeah, not, not that we know of, I mean, it, the zoning will extend to that creek area, but it's in a floodplain.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of things that's gotta happen to go through to put something else in there.
And again, they're not trying to expand right now, that's not what they're trying to do.
They're just trying to fix the one that caught on fire, so.
So, we're just cleaning up the paperwork that should've been done, anyway. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, you're all right.
The item you talked about, uh, where they're, with ceasefire, are they coming or are they not?
No, they're, they're, they're coming, I'm gonna try to get control of the renegade work that they're doing.
Right, absolutely.
So, they're coming, and they're tearing stuff up like it's going out of style, so we shut them down over the weekend, and then we're gonna bring them back in, and I'd rather talk to one of their VPs than the people they have on the street because they don't speak English.
Okay. Will I need to stay if I have a concern also, just like what you have?
You're, you're more than welcome to stay and listen to me.
Oh, just listen, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a good talk with them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Is there anyone else to speak on the matter of the Ventnor Vineyards at Castle Woods LLC, county-initiated zoning request? Anyone else to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone else here to speak on that matter unless the board has any additional comments or questions. We'll close that public hearing, this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Daniel makes a motion, Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B under my section for public hearings is a public hearing on the Dylan and Jennifer Walker conditional use permit at thirty-six oh-three Highway four seventy-one, again, another, uh, District two property. Mister and Miss Walker are seeking a conditional use permit to place a brand-new sixteen-by-eighty manufactured home at thirty-six oh-three Highway four seventy-one. The manufactured home will be used as a temporary dwelling during construction of their new home. Uh, this is a twelve-acre parcel that's zoned RE one. RE one allows temporary use within a one-year time limit. The property is posted, notice published, and no calls have been received in opposition on this matter. This time we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Dylan and Jennifer Walker conditional use permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter, no one's coming forward. This time we'll close that public hearing, it would be appropriate to take action.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, all right, Daniel's made the motion, I second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item C is a public hearing on the Charles Moran conditional use permit at seventeen fifteen White Road. This is District one property, Mr. Moran is seeking a conditional use permit to place a brand-new double-wide manufactured home at seventeen fifteen White Road. Mr. Moran owns a six-acre parcel with existing home on it, his daughter will be moving into the existing home, and Mr. Moran and his wife will occupy the manufactured home. This property is zoned A one, property was posted, notice published, no calls have been received in opposition. Mr. Morrison, who's not with us today, has requested one condition. It's that, uh, the manufactured home cannot be used as rental property at any point. And so, that would be a condition that would be, uh, would be placed on this conditional use permit.
He also sent an email, and that was in it, but he would like for, to further state that if the use changes, that they have to come back before the board.
We'll paper that up.
Okay.
As stated, as requested.
All right.
Are there any other conditions the board seeks? Any other comments or questions about that? Okay, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action on this, uh, conditional use request.
Motion to approve those stated conditions.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Is that, public hearing is closed, correct, Mr.?
We will, we'll close all three of those in the event that I have failed to close them as we've gone, okay? Something tells me I may have. as we've gone. Okay? Something tells me I may have. Item D is the consideration of potential action to authorize our board process to execute a memorandum of agreement between Rankin County and the Mississippi Department of Transportation governing the use of federal funding for construction of our Gunner Road Extension Project, also known as the Florence Byron Parkway. This, that's a road construction project. This is, as you know, this is an LPA project. We're required to execute agreements consistently on both projects with DOT with respect to how the funding is being expended and who's going to keep up with that. So this is simply an agreement that governs how the documentation is kept up with and prepared.
Which one is it?
Motion to approve Southwest Rankin Parkway. Motion to approve.
Second. All right. Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, gentlemen, is a, this is lawyering at its, at its highest and best, apparently. We need to enter into a joint defense agreement with Hines County and Madison County with respect to threatened and pending litigation by a particular private ambulance company regarding compliance with our Rankin County Ambulance Service Ordinance. This is to give us the protection that we need to, to, to stand against any sort of discovery disputes that may come our way in pending litigation as we move through the process of addressing the ambulance agreements. This agreement provides for sharing of our expert witness expenses. You guys have already approved that, but this agreement will simply paper that up, and matters of defense and privilege. So we just need this on the record that that's what we're entering into.
Motion to approve.
Second. Bob makes a motion to approve, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item F, Mr. President, is our consistent last three months of the term activity as it relates to road department expenditures pursuant to Mississippi Code Annotated Section eleven-nineteen, I'm sorry, nineteen-eleven-twenty-seven. I'm asking the board to make a specific finding that the activities and expenditures that are listed under item F on the agenda are necessary and essential to the efficiency and economy of the operation of the county. That's straight out of the statute. You'll see items one through six that are listed there. I'm going to turn and look to my road manager, and I think I'm going to get some assistance on maybe at least two, maybe three additional items that we want to put under this section. Mike, if you'll come forward. So these would be items seven and eight to add to this list.
Make a motion to add these three items that Mr. Harrison's getting ready to, to speak to the agenda.
Second.
We, uh. All right. Bob makes a motion to add three items to the agenda. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Favor the three items are added.
There's three items, right?
Yeah, we got three items.
First, let's tell you what those are.
This is where we can talk about them.
What are they?
All right, one is to finish up a little bit in Oak Grove, Jay. I know you're tired of hearing me.
Oh, don't put that one on.
You think, you think he's tired of hearing that?
Two items.
I understand. Well, we got to do a little more concrete work, and then we'll be through with that bridge thing or the cover issue.
Okay.
Right there. We got two quotes.
So one is concrete work at Oak Grove.
Let's just, can we just, I guess we're doing one at a time and add, because we hadn't added it to the agenda yet.
Right.
And now we're starting to get.
You've added those three.
We hadn't taken, no, I sort of take the vote, and then, all in favor?
We're going to tell you what the three are.
Okay.
Uh, Steve, if that's okay. The first is the concrete work at Oak Grove.
All right.
Striping.
It actually ended up on the agenda.
Okay, never mind about that one. All right.
The other one, we're going to wait till the fifth.
All right, so that's the only one. Oak Grove, concrete.
What about striping the little piece there on McLaurin?
Uh, we have one striping here, don't we?
There's a couple of stripings in there.
Traffic strip and spillway.
Well, or you got.
We just have one thing to add to this.
Well, you got three at, right there. That's going to be temporary and permanent striping on spillway. That'll be a correction.
What about McLaurin?
Oh, we'll get that in that process. You want to get it?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I didn't know if we could just spray that, or do we have to face somebody to do that?
We could buy us a spray truck.
Well, we ain't going to get in all that stuff.
It's just not, it's just not for McLaurin. I got duties for you, but, you know.
Wouldn't be just for McLaurin?
We can do my McLaurin.
Mike, are we adding that as number eight, or is this? All right, that's going to be striping at McLaurin.
Striping at McLaurin.
All right. Talking about a hundred yards or so.
Right.
And then permanent striping. What, you either got permanent striping or temporary on spillway. I've got two processes right there that has to be done. I just wanted to clarify that we've got two processes going on right there. And then we've got the concrete deal, which we have two quotes on that, and that'll get taken care of this week. Uh, we'll get that approved.
I don't really know what she's talking about.
Some wing wall, it's more wing wall work on that.
Oh, I thought we were going to rip rap it.
It's not holding up, Jay, with the water we've had. It's starting to get under the new sidewalk in the road.
So you're going to do the head wall on the other side, too?
We're just going to do one head wall. Just to clean this up and make care of it.
So that I'm clear, we're adding one that is not currently on our list, which is the Oak Grove concrete work.
Oh, okay.
That's the only one we're adding.
No, we're adding McLaurin.
We added, we added McLaurin.
All right, that's right.
With the county administrator.
All right.
That's right.
McLaurin striping.
So I'm in my motion to, to add the two items that we did, and we deem this is a need and a necessity.
That's correct.
About the county to do whatever we need to try to do.
I'll second that.
All right. Bob makes a motion to add two items, which would be Oak Grove, striping at McLaurin. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve.
Mr. President, before, you will also be authorizing issuance of payment for these activities and expenditures upon receipt of all appropriate invoicing following completion of the work that is being authorized. That's a part of the motion.
Motion to approve.
All right. Bob's made a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, now, we have a second. Under any other discussion, can y'all tell us where the, is this money coming from the bond money?
Some of it is, Steve. Um, I'm going, let's, let's see if I can get Ms. Laura to help us with that, make sure we stay.
Bond money, stock bridge, bond money.
No, the, the, the equipment, you know, are you paying for that out of your budget, or?
No, that's coming out of bond.
You sure? You amazing? It ain't coming out of your budget? I mean, you said it like it was happening, you know?
Well, I mean, we set that money aside. That's, that's some of the money we set aside for the road department to finish, man.
Like item one?
Safe feels good, man.
All right, we got a motion by Bob, a second by Jay.
I'll take a loan from him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I got like that twelve, that's your thing.
Hey, that's good.
Man.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
One more. Don't we have one more on the next page? All right, well, I do, I've got one more drawn in then for Jared. Well, Jared wanted me to bring an, an additional item up, and I'll, uh, feels that the shop mezzanine is a bit overpriced at thirty-two thousand.
Somebody got to get a little history on this because I'm, I'm a little behind on that thing.
Mike, in his building, he wants storage, a mezzanine where he can put parts and things, you know, above head and work under it. And I've got, you know, you see him in most all shops.
Well, it's on, it's on your thing, your mezzanine, but thirty-two thousand. Basically, what it is, we could build it ourselves, but we actually had this drawed out, and this is a spec deal, to take a certain amount of load weight for safety reasons. So it's pre-made already. So it's, it's to a standard weight design, and so you can have walking traffic under it. So it's a safety issue instead of just being homemade issue. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We looked at making it homemade.
Right. You're going to do it yourself.
We was going to do it ourselves.
But in order, for safety reasons.
Safety reason, we.
Went to a prefab type system?
Prefab system that's got a weight limit on it and is constructed by.
There will be people working underneath his storage.
And engineered, so.
Got you. So that was the reason the price went up from where, what you originally thought to where it is today at thirty-two.
Yes, sir.
So is, how's that work?
Is this something that there'd be a tag on it somewhere that a OSHA guy comes and looks at and says, ah, that works, and moves on?
That's right.
Okay. OSHA.
Make a motion, we add it to the agenda.
It's, it's in there.
It's already on there.
Jared just wanted to.
Jared raised a question about the cost.
He, his, I read, this price is questionable. It should be no more than twenty thousand, and that may be a little high. Just think it needs looking into. And Jared was referring, I think, to you building it, or, or maybe our maintenance people building it or something, instead of getting a prefab.
Right. Well, we got a prefab because it's stamped by engineer to hold this mile of weight and different things like that, so.
And we don't have a maintenance crew anymore.
You're right. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
We are your previous, they already know.
Okay, all right, move on then. Wanda Martin.
Um, item A, authority to issue check in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to Hines Community Co- Community College for the second payment on the robotics lab.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Yep.
Item B, approval of First Amendment to novation service agreement with Vital Core Health Strategies LLC for the healthcare services to inmates as approved on September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and authority for the sheriff to sign.
So moved.
Second. Daniel makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve item C for Ms. Wanda. She wanted to read through all that.
Thank you.
Police car package stuff.
Second.
All right. Daniel makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? And in all of this, I, I do want to say I, I really appreciate the sheriff and the Sheriff's Department for seeking out these good used vehicles, and we're paying less than half price. Uh, you know, and it saves the county a lot of money. But anyhow, we've got a, a motion by Daniel, second by Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, new Rankin County Courthouse facilities, approval of pay application number twenty-eight to Chris Albrecht and Construction Company in the amount of six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents, and authority to issue that check.
Motion to approve.
All right. Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds. And I did notice it doesn't have anything in here by days.
I think it's the first six months.
All right. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, acceptance of the lowest quote from Reed's Metal Incorporated for a steel building package for the new Pierce Road Fire Station in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred, five hundred dollars, and authority to issue the purchase order. This is a finding of the Board of Supervisors that all quotes received are substantially identical.
Motion to approve.
All right. Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, additional business? Lettering to the public library, something like that. Bob.
I make a motion, we approve that, whatever it is. It's a bucket, let's go for it.
It's a sign.
Two hundred dollars.
We have the quote. Janice has the quote.
Janice has the quote. It's two hundred.
I'm sorry?
Janice has the quote. It's two hundred dollars.
For a sign on the pocket library.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve the payment of about two hundred dollars for the public library, by the bucket library. Have a second. I second it. Any other discussion?
I just have a question.
Okay.
Is that installed?
Uh, I'm not sure, but I heard Brad. I heard Brad say he would install it if we.
Okay.
Is there, is there somebody to put it? Yeah, I mean, if somebody can put it, will the company put it in there?
I bet the volunteer.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
All right. Uh, Bob made a motion, I second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Executive session. We got need?
Um, we have a couple more things for, um, additional business.
Yes, ma'am. No kidding.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's go ahead.
What's over here?
All right.
One additional item that we have, and Craig's going to come with the actual wording we need here. There was a purchase over the weekend by the sheriff's department. He was unable to get access to our Home Depot credit card. He does have a purchase order number, but he put it on the sheriff's card. So we need to take care of this to.
He's a good guy, you know, what can we say?
Not his personal. Not his personal.
Never mind, I'll take it back.
The sheriff's credit card that they have for their department, which technically is not used for this, but it was an emergency, and we did have to get this done. So Craig's going to help us with the proper terminology that we can make sure this is.
So what you'll be adding is authorization for the county administrator to account for the fact that that was a general county purchase and not a sheriff's department purchase, just for the purposes of accounting. So you're, that's what needs to be added to the agenda.
Motion to add that item to the agenda.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion, Daniel seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other, no, well, any opposed?
So you're authorizing the county administrator to make an accounting notation, correction, whatever is required, so that it reflects that that purchase was a general county purchase for materials, items, commodities that were, that should have been included under the county's general county Home Depot card.
Did we approve?
We, we just added it.
Motion to approve.
All right. Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? Oh, well, let me just give a little explanation. And it's, I mean, it's pretty simple. Brian had to move some prisoners into the new facility or a different place because he was overcrowded, and they had to be in there today, this morning. And there was a drain in there that was not finished. Brian went to Home Depot to buy the materials. I'm talking about joints and pipes and, uh, and he gets there and realizes that he's got, he called our, our person clerk, and he had his card, and she said, no, you can't use this card. You need to use your card. Your, uh, excuse me, your government, your Rankin County government card. So he goes back to the office, and he, for some reason, it's passed and would not allow him entry into his office. Home Depot was closing in two hours. Now, this was last night. I mean, Saturday night. Home Depot was closing in two hours. If he didn't get this material and be able to put it in that night and yesterday, he couldn't move his prisoners. So he had no other option, and he called us and just, we discussed it and thought this was the only way we could get it in there. Everything's fixed. They did a great job with, with their own hand, I mean, with their own people, and the prisoners are fine. And we just need to clean up our paperwork to reflect where that money actually will be coming from. All right. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
One other item just for discussion that's not on here was mentioned this morning, the generator for this building. Um, we did reach out to Taylor Power. We had their representative came out, looked at it. Uh, he brought in an engineer with him from Taylor Power. They said that this building shared a load with another building, and so because of that, they could not tell how much power it would take to operate a generator nor what size. Their recommendation was that we get an electrical engineer out here that is going to have to look at the schematics of this building and how it's wired, if we can find that, um, to find out who do we share the load with, so that they can even recommend a size and what it would take. And then the next one is where would it be located? When they came out, they said they didn't know what physical location it could be put in.
I thought we were talking about just running a line off the generator to the doors.
That was in Larry's building. Well, that is Larry. You're talking, well, you're talking about this old building.
We were talking about, right, the generator would operate this entire annex building, which would also control any of that, their doors, whatever.
They don't have many choices for what building we're sharing with. It's either going to be the courthouse or the sheriff's.
It was supposed to be hooked with the jail so that we could.
That is correct, but they could not just tell by looking at it.
Let's just turn all the power off and crank that baby up.
See, it worked.
We'll find out.
That could be, if it's the jail, we'd be in trouble. I'm not touching it.
So what, what do we ask?
We need to, I guess I need board approval to reach out to an electrical engineer to come. Now, I don't know what the cost that's going to be, but somebody to come out to find out where the load comes from, how it's shared.
I, I thought when we discussed this last, we were talking about just running a line off that, that generator existing, not installing a new generator.
Well, I think the problem was we weren't sure whether or not, when that, that courthouse was built, whether or not that.
The load.
That, that was generated just for that building. It's just the latest and greatest That, that was just for that building. It's just the latest and greatest building we got. I think that was the problem. We didn't know. It was unsure. So I don't, I guess it gets back to that electrical engineer. He'll have to tell us how it's all.
Well, warehouse all tied and what size and if it'll hold, if it'll work.
Turn off all the power and see what happens.
That's what Bob said, I don't think it works.
You'll find out where the load is.
Alright. We've gotta have somebody that gives us some advice.
I think the building needs to have generators.
Yep.
It does.
Yep. I'd say.
So I guess the authority would be to.
Figure out, figure out what we need.
Hire an electrical engineer for an evaluation of it.
Why don't we, why don't we get you guys to signal that it's okay to begin that process of finding someone? Get you guys a price, an anticipated price on what this review might cost you. To get you to authorize that.
Good, I would say we can do it in two weeks.
Yeah, I don't know, we wouldn't even know what it's gonna be as far as even kind of set or not to exceed.
Right.
I, I have no clue.
I don't either.
So, let's, why don't you let us talk to?
Yeah.
A couple of like engineers.
Well, some of these companies that you might be getting bids from can provide that same information free. I mean, they can come out and say, this is what you need and this is where you're at and we will bid this amount. I mean, just look at that.
And Taylor ought to be able to do that. I'm not really sure why they didn't.
They, they were the ones, uh, Mr. Shaw emailed back to me and said that their, their electrician came with them, but he said it's gonna take an electrical engineer to do this.
I guess have that professional liability, cover the professional liability side of liability.
Yeah, if you said how much we charge to do it, they'd have a gal on the spot. Alright, well, let's look, next. Yeah.
Then come back with fifteen. Maybe answer better than that.
That'll work.
Alright.
I have an additional business item too, if we're done.
Yeah, go ahead. I got, I got one too.
You got your guy, yeah, go ahead.
I got two, but I'm gonna talk to him in just a second. The other thing I wanna mention was, one of the things that happened this weekend kinda expressed the importance of getting some maintenance guy out here. Saturday morning, Becky's office calls me. They're in the middle of uh, voting, absentee voting. And problem with that absentee voting was, the lights, I guess it tripped some kind of circuit or something. The lights wouldn't come on in the area that they need to be able to see. So um, I started thinking, well, I'll just call Laura, cause she's our county administrator and then I forgot she quit. And then I said, well, I'll just call Wanda. And I didn't have Wanda's cell phone number. So then I started thinking, I'll call Slay and he's a thousand dollars an hour, so I changed my mind on that. So then I thought I'd call Bob and I said, no, I'm not gonna call Bob. He's too mad at me. So, and then Bishop, I knew where Bishop was. So Gaines been out all night, so I didn't wanna call Gaines. So the next, Mike.
I was with Mr. Trump.
President, so I couldn't wanna call him.
I wasn't out on.
I didn't wanna put that on the steps of the White House, so we went to somewhere else. So then I was thinking, I'll just call Harrison, cause he fixes everything. But he was in the process of getting lit up over there at Spillway North Shore, you know, that debacle that was going on. So the next go-to is Mike Word. So I said, this is gonna take an hour on this phone call, so everybody just texting. So I had Mike go find us somebody on the electrical side to come back out here on an emergency basis to get the lights working in Circuit Court. Um, I don't know what the cost of that was and I know we kinda did it. He called one of the electrical people he's got working in the UOC because it's a nightmare of electrical problems. Got them over there and got that straight. So we're gonna have a PO come back at some point, Ms. Wannas to kind of backcharge, to be able to get, they got the lighting working in about thirty minutes. So, lights were out and something tripped and something blown or whatever it was. And anyway, Word got that fixed at eight-thirty on Saturday morning. I thought that was our cheapest route to fix it.
Good job, good job, Mike.
Mike Word, man of all things. So in the second additional business I had was on the ceasefire issue. I think if they're here, if I can talk about that right now. Mr. President, you get with that?
Yes, sir.
So I think, Brett?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for coming in, man. And I apologize for calling you this morning.
Oh, that's okay.
The main reason I wanna call you, and this is a good, simple thing, but I just wanted to explain to you the problems I got in the Castle Woods area. You probably heard bits and pieces of it.
Yeah, my father-in-law lives there, so.
Yeah, so it's been a mess over there. So I'm gonna kinda walk you through the full scope of my problems, starting about, well, sometime Friday and works up into the late night, Friday evening. But basically what's happened, um, we've had problems over the last six months with ceasefire and AT&T when they come in to put this cable in place.
Right.
Throughout our neighborhoods, uh, at the reservoir area and they're actually going all across the county. Problem is, they come in, they get these specs and we ask them to stay on side with the permit says that they should be able to do. And if you're gonna have to deviate from what your permit says, we ask you to come back to us. We understand you gotta make changes and audible things from time to time.
Sure.
But that doesn't always happen. And then we get out there and I know y'all sub these things out to contractors and our biggest problem is with these contractors. And I know it's hard to find work right now cause the economy's really good and y'all struggle sometimes in locating these. But I can't emphasize to you more the importance of getting good quality contractors out in these locations because they go like the wild, wild west out here and tear up these neighborhoods and these houses.
Yes.
I'm gonna walk you through the situation of what my life was last week.
Okay.
So we walk into Friday and we cut three different water lines between Monday through Friday in Castle Woods.
Right, we hit a water main on Friday.
Right, and then the water main you cut on Friday was basically because they wouldn't go in the proper depth. The contractors wasn't going the proper depth.
Okay.
The problem with that is, we just put a brand-new road in on Castle Woods Boulevard. So in order for Flowwood to come back out, whose water it is, they've gotta come back out there and dig up my road. So this is the third time they hit a water line that week. And I understand things happen.
Yep.
At the same time this happens, I felt like a bomb hit because they hit Energy's power line up on Wexford Court, just at the beginning of it, and shut down the entire intersection.
So I wouldn't familiar with that.
Which is all the, the streetlights at Castle Woods Boulevard and Highway twenty-five, where cars just ramp up and down. So that's going on. So I got water leaking throughout the neighborhood. For the third time that week, a water line's been hit in that area, which shut down all those areas. Then I've got another road contractor that goes through exploring areas of the ground to find lines or cables that might be hidden, not, uh, that was marked under the eight-one-one stuff. So the problem I got with that was when they come in, they dig these three and a half to four-foot holes down and they expose some wire or cable that are down there, they don't come back in and cover them up. So what happens is, on Dorchester, at one-forty Dorchester, is in a cul-de-sac. And they go through around this mailbox and they dig out this three and a half to four-foot hole. And they find a line, they go across the lady's driveway, they tie into the box and they go over to the water meter. They cut that water meter too. They dig another four-foot hole there, but back to the one that was near the mailbox. Well, this lady lives in the cul-de-sac right there and every day she sends her four-year-old grandson to the mailbox to get the mail. That's kinda his chore for the day.
Right, right.
So as he goes out there, he wanders around and there's a hole about from here to Bishop's area that's full of mud and wires and water and everything else. This was Thursday morning.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, what does the four-year-old do? He goes and peeks over inside the hole and because it's slick with mud around it.
Sure.
Straight into it. It's Halloween costume. Now, I know it's not really a big deal to you, right? But now, I've got, now I've got a four-year-old boy, waist-deep into a hole. He wasn't hurt, wasn't injured. But he's standing in a hole with an exposed wire at the bottom, fiber, alright, so he's standing in that in the mud. And he can't get out because he's digging and it's all slick mud around him, right? Now, I know it's not really a big deal to a lot of people, right?
Well, it is to me.
And it's not a big deal to the people that, that hear me tell the story.
Mm-hmm.
The problem with the whole situation was, was it was my son. And it was my mother-in-law's house where he was staying that went and fell into the hole.
Oh, man.
So you see how this kinda comes to the point?
I do, I do.
Normally, I would stand here and tell you how the people feel that's in the community, right? And they're upset and I'm trying to be their voice to walk it, walk that, uh, through that pathway. The problem is now, I'm not speaking as a county supervisor.
Sure.
I'm speaking as a resident of Castle Woods area.
And a father.
Whose mother-in-law had my son go check the mail, alright, and he messed that up, but he fell in a hole that ceasefire's contractors dug. Now, that's not the only one of these situations that are out there.
Oh, yeah.
But that's my irritation with the entire system. So last week, we cut three water lines. We cut a, a energy line, a power line, that shut down all the lighting system of it. We've got holes that aren't covered up and cleaned up and a kid fell into it. This is where my problems got with ceasefire. So my issue to Mike was, shut them down because we can't go rogue anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the problem with shutting it down is the whole place looks like a bomb hit, right? Everybody's coming in, you're halfway through everything and I don't, didn't get any type of uh, work done by stopping you. My problem is, I need y'all to pay better attention to your contractors that come out there, alright? Now, somewhere in this whole system, we came in late Friday afternoon and we put some dirt and stuff on top of it and cleaned it up. But you've got exposed hole, holes that aren't covered up and marked by any type of marking or any type of fencing.
No orange fencing around the hole?
There was none. There was absolutely none. I'll show you the pictures of it when we get out of here.
Sure.
But there was none. And Delta was one of the contractors, they came out and they looked at it and they saw that it wasn't marked and it wasn't covered and it wasn't fenced in. And this was on Thursday. Now, remind me what Thursday night was?
Halloween.
Halloween. So now I've got multiple holes throughout the subdivision where kids are going from one spot to another spot, wide open, running through yards and you've got exposed holes that aren't covered in that little pretty pink orange fencing, right? We gotta be better than that.
Oh, most definitely.
It's kinda my argument and my concern.
Yeah.
Now, the problem is, the ceasefire people don't see the contractors that are out there.
Right.
But somebody has gotta take some kind of importance and some type of responsibility on their back to say, I gotta put good contractors in these areas, one, not to destroy everybody's property and one, not to leave these crazy holes and stuff and try to understand what we're cutting into when we dig these, these holes. I'm sorry, you came in here to hear me say all that kinda stuff like that. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be ugly to you.
Oh, sure, you're fine.
But you gotta express the importance to whoever up at ceasefire that you deal with on hiring these contractors. We don't want those contractors running roads, tearing up our subdivision, endangering the lives of the people that live there.
I agree.
That's one of the biggest things.
Is it the same contractor that did all this? Or are these multiple contractors?
We have a crew of like four different contractors. We've got STT, Gridsource, uh, we use DMB and we use Delta Direction.
Yeah.
So Delta Direction's doing Castle Woods.
Alright, but what, but what Delta does is, they come in there and they got Castle Woods going too. So they're in a hurry because they're trying to do quantity, right? So what they do, they say, what we're gonna do, we're gonna sub out this work to somebody else as well. So what's happened is it gets to four or five different levels of contractors. So Delta wasn't the one doing the cutting, even though they were assigned to that area.
Right.
They'd gone and got another additional contractor out of.
You let your contractor sub to other contractors?
Yes, we do. That way we can.
Control then.
Well, you get a better process when you have other crews in there because you can have one crew doing the boring and the digging. The other crew comes in behind them, placing the handholds and the soil and all that stuff. Now, this crew that was here Friday just got here Thursday. We pulled them out of North Mississippi and put them down here because they didn't wanna work in South Haven and, and all that area anymore. So uh, that was our plan, was to go in here and try to get all these holes filled in. The way Delta does things, me personally, aside from ceasefire, I don't agree with their process cause my other contractors, they'll go in, they're boring, digging, they got a crew coming in right behind them. So they're just like a little train covering all the holes up.
All the problems that happened last week was because the contractors weren't digging at the proper depth. Your permits come in and say, we gotta be five feet or deeper.
Right.
And these cuts and damages were made in the four-foot mark area.
Right, right.
So we're not even following what the specs are.
Yeah.
And this is going on from subdivision to subdivision to subdivision to subdivision and nobody at ceasefire AT&T cares. So.
Oh, no, we care. We care a lot, but with the houses as close as they are together?
I know it's tough.
It is. It's hard to come up and go down, come up and go down at five feet depth.
But what, what I'm hoping you'll do when you leave here.
Yes, right.
Is go find somebody high up in the chain. And you may be one of those high-up VPs making huge bids and money.
I got thrown under the bus this morning.
That's right. And I'm not shooting the messenger.
That's fine, no, you're good, you're good.
But I want you to go back to ceasefire and explain to them that somehow or no, the reservoir's messed up and elected this wacko guy that lives out there that's had enough of the ceasefire and AT&T tyrants that are blowing through our neighborhoods. I've had it.
I can't blame you.
The problem is right now, I've got the, I would shut it all down, but the problem is it's already going. And then, and now just leave holes for six months.
Right, right.
Where I've got, my next problem is approving anything else. New stuff, new projects that they're gonna have to go back and figure out, what are we gonna do from here? We gotta get finished in the Castle Woods area because it's a, it's a war zone right now.
Yeah.
But we gotta get this finished. So if you would, take that back.
I will.
Tell them, I talked to Daniel Cross, he's just, he's lost his mind, he's off his rocker, but this is what's happening. Can you do that for me?
I can definitely do that. I got, I got something for you guys too, real quick. Mike, I spoke with you about this about a week or so ago. The Fallen Oak neighborhood was not accepted by the county, is that right?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Oh, okay.
How, so we, so we presented, we presented permits.
It hadn't been turned over.
Hadn't been turned over.
Developers.
Okay, so when I get those drawings back for the ten-foot, fifteen-foot utility easements and everything is where it needs to be. I got with the water department, I also got with the engineer with the development to make sure that our plats and everything matches theirs and everything's in line like it needs to be to avoid hits. Um, once I get those back, do I re-present those?
Yeah, the good, the good part about that is it's not in my district.
It is mine.
It is yours, okay.
Ceasefire's coming your way.
Oh, I've had, we, I, I, I had one home that was out of water three days and one week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had to fix that issue last time.
That, uh, but you're asking about Fallen Oaks and you wanna know?
I had, I had some confusion on that. So I wanna know how to get the permits for that and when the right time would be and, and so forth, once we get everything correct. Cause I didn't know who do I give them to since they were sent back.
You need to work with Mike.
That man back there.
Our road manager and engineer.
Alright.
Thank you Brett for coming in. And I'm not, I'm not fussing at you.
I understand.
But I please want you to go in there and kick somebody's desk over at ceasefire and explain to the port of what we're talking about.
Okay, what, what is that address, by the way?
Where the kid fell in the hole?
Where the kid fell in?
One-forty Dorchester.
Okay.
Delta's been out there and their safety consultants went out there and made pictures and they drew a little pretty chalk line around it. They put a, a measuring tool down in the hole and I told the guy just himself to get in there. We'll see if we can get him out, but he didn't wanna do that part.
I understand, man.
That, that's kinda where the issue was.
Got you. Awesome, man. We'll get it handled. I appreciate you guys. Thank y'all for ranting.
Thank you. Sir? That's what he was, ceasefire. It scared everybody to death, you know? That's what it was.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. My two million dollars bond money for City Brandon versus East Metro. I wanna put this to bed one way or another. You know, uh, Mr. Bishop's got his point of view, I've got mine. Um, uh, nothing's changed since the last time I talked. Uh, Brandon has activated the projects with maybe a section of overlays. I have the platform that out. That's no big deal, one way or the other. Uh, ready to roll, the turnkey, ready to go.
The majority of that money is gonna be for an intersection, Highway eighteen?
One point five million is for the red lights and a half million is for the overlay of Burnham Road and Shallow Road.
But it, the intersection at eighteen and.
That's, that, that's probably the bulk.
That's the biggest.
That's a, that's a new intersection, that's the bulk of the, of the one point five. I don't know the exact figure, but that's the bulk of the one point five. Uh, and it's needed with, with the combination of the schools out there on eighteen and just the traffic in general on eighteen. And I agree with Mike Harrison. Uh, I came through there about four-thirty. No way you can get out of Marquette Road onto Highway eighteen and head south. I don't know where the, the highway department was on their rationalization for saying no to a traffic light signal there. They, they've lost their mind, you know, because you can't get out. And I don't know where these people are going, but they finally managed to get all out of there. Uh, but that's where I am. I'd be happy to make the motion today to add it to the agenda for approval for MOU with Mr. Slay as I'm getting that kinda how it would move forward, kinda like we do with Pearl, uh, semantics. Uh, so I'm gonna make that motion, we add that to the agenda.
Alright, Bob makes motion to add this to the agenda, the two million dollars that's in the bond uh, that originally was discussed for the East Corridor, whatever, but.
East Brandon Corridor.
East Brandon Corridor.
But now going toward.
That was the original and it looked like the, the money would not be able to be used in the timeframe we have.
Right.
Uh, to spend it in on that project. So now, Bob is asking for this money, uh, in a different direction. That is to be, that's just to add it to the agenda.
The agenda.
Alright, Bob makes that motion.
Second.
Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes.
I made the motion, makes, I made the motion to approve for the three red light alignments, uh, as well as Shallow Road, uh, Burnham Road, as well as, there's an offshoot of, of, uh, Shallow Road, Wanda, Kennedy Farm Parkway. That one, if there's any money left, because I almost lost a tire in a hole out there last week. It is. And, and I understand, and the mayor's telling me a lot of log trucks come back out up Shallow Road, turn down, so the Kennedy Farm Expressway and then head on out to the highway. So they get a lot of abuse. But that third road too, if there's any fund, they have the ability to use it for that project, get it to anything else.
You know, you know if we had that hall route?
Yeah, there you go.
Wouldn't that have been incredible to have? Cause you could go back and said, you know what?
I tell you what, in appreciation of your vote, I'll vote.
My man, my man, Harrison, you hear where we got hit, Slay? Do you hear that? And I second it. We're in.
You got it. But I made the motion to approve those, that expenditure.
Wait, let's say what it is, it's paying for their MPO project.
That's right.
Okay.
But we're gonna get the hall bond, the hall ordinance back.
I think, I mean, we've shared with the other cities, we helped Flowwood and Convention Center. We helped Pearl in their roads and we've helped others and we all had things that we put in for, in this bond, uh, as far back six, eight months ago. And Bob asked, this was what, I mean, he asked for two million dollars.